Welcome, everyone. If I could have everyone's attention. What is it? Is that the right one? The quiet guy? Nice job. Okay, so I would like to welcome everyone to the February 7, 2023, meeting of the Carver School Committee. We can start with the pledge? Okay. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That is so much. You need to give up. Thank you. So we're going to start. You're going to start with the recognition? Okay.
Yes, we'd like to start this evening with a couple of recognitions. First of all, I'd like to call Charlie Donovan up to the table. Charlie, if you could come up. Now, we'll give him a round of applause. Now, I'll tell you why we're giving Charlie a round of applause. Charlie was our Project 351 Ambassador. Project 351 is an independent nonprofit organization that builds a movement of youth-led services by allowing each Massachusetts 351 cities and towns to select one Project 351 Ambassador based on their demonstration of leadership, service, and commitment to the local community. And every community gets to select one eighth grader. So Charlie was selected by our faculty and staff based on those demonstrating leadership and service and commitment to the community to be Carver's 351 representative. The ambassadors are united for a year of leadership and service to transform communities, elevate kindness, advance social justice, and gain courage and compassion and the capabilities to lead. So we were excited that Charlie was our 351 Ambassador, and the program actually starts on the Martin Luther King Day weekend. So Charlie spent the day in Boston representing the community of Carver. And so we want to, obviously, it's tremendous recognition to be selected as the one eighth grader to represent the community under these distinguished characteristics. And we're going to give Charlie, so Charlie, we want to say congratulations to you and celebrate that. I think it's another round of applause would be great for Charlie. And we wanted to give him a couple of minutes just to share about his experiences as the 351 Ambassador. So Charlie, thank you.
Hello. My name is Charlie Donovan, Carver's Project 351 Ambassador for 2023. Project 351 is a nonprofit organization to promote leadership, love, unity, kindness, and hope across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Each school/town selects an eighth grade student to represent their school or town for one year. My year-long journey began on January 10, when all of the ambassadors from around the state gathered for Launch Day in 2023. During the Launch Day, we all did community service as a group impacted over 6,000 lives in just over two hours. I visited the Cradlestacranes warehouse and packaged books for underprivileged children. Coming up in this year is many opportunities to help promote community service around the town of Carver. And coming up next for me is spring service, which during late March and early April, I'll be collecting certain types of clothing to donate to Cradlestacranes in Newton, Massachusetts. I'll be asking the community of Carver to assist me during the collection. And after that, there'll be a leadership reunion in June where I will reunite with my fellow group of ambassadors. And then during the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year, I will be running a food drive for Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry, and we will be collecting food for Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry. Thank you for the opportunity to share about Project 351.
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie, I don't know, not to keep you on the spot, but I don't know if any of the members of the committee have any questions for you or thoughts?
I just want to say thank you for attending and for coming here and sharing your story with us. And please feel free to come back and share your other projects when they're starting so we can help you spread the word across the community. And thank you for your service.
Yeah, Charlie did great.
Great job. Thank you.
Our second part is a recognition of our elementary school chorus. And throughout, really, actually, over the past year and a half, we've been looking at, at each meeting we take, sometimes look at the different curriculum areas, both at the middle high school level and at the elementary level. And this year, we've been focusing specifically on the Allied Arts Programs at the elementary level. So later this evening, Ms. Kramp's going to do a presentation about the music program at the elementary school. But to kind of start that presentation off or kick it off, we thought we'd invite the elementary chorus to perform a few songs at the beginning of our meeting. So please welcome the Carver Elementary Chorus, who's going to perform a few songs for us.
Right? We should go. It's like they're going to come around.
Yeah, we're going to come around. We're all going to come with the audience, except I have to stop.
Simone and Maggie.
Yeah, yeah, you guys can go.
So now he's going to do. You're just going to do.
Yeah, we're doing the music.
We'll do that one at the end, so I'll call you over. Maggie and Simone, why don't you guys come here and I'll be here to help too, okay? Can you just go? Testing, testing. Oh, it works. Good. All right, cool. Hi, everybody. My name is Ms. Kramp. I am the music teacher at the elementary school, and this is our fourth and fifth grade chorus. This is a small but mighty crew. We have about 90 kids in our chorus, and we are really, really appreciative of you taking time out of your very busy schedules to come and share music with us. What we're going to do first is we're going to quickly just warm up our bodies, warm up our voices, and then we'll sing a couple of words for you. All right. We got to get silly. I know that we have an audience here, but we can still get silly. Let's five, four, three. Ready? Five, four, three, two, one. 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 Four, three, two, one. Four, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Two, one, two, one, two, one, two, one. One, 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 one. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's do a little bit of warming up with our, we do a goofy warm-up called Little Tommy Tinker. Little Tommy Tinker, one, two, ready, go.
Little Tommy Tinker sat down on his bed and he began to cry. Maaah, maaah, poor little innocent guy.
And let's really practice with those tall vowels. All right, one more time. One, two, ready, go.
Little Tommy Tinker sat down on his bed and he began to cry. Maaah, maaah, poor little innocent guy.
Nice job. Can we split it? Let's have Simone over. You guys are part one. You guys are part two. One, two, ready, go.
Little Tommy Tinker sat down on his bed and he began to cry. Maaah, maaah, poor little innocent guy.
Thank you for letting us warm up. Our first song is called "Sasariya," and we have some movement where we're pretending that we're trying to grab fish in the water. So see if you can notice the words Charlie expressed there. Right. Staying down first, then leaning left. Sasariya. One, two, go.
Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Ropaté, losi amate, Sasariya. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté. Sasariya, Sasariya, na na na, ropaté.
So there's a lot of good discussions, a lot of shared concerns were talked about, and I think came to a good resolution on that. And I know also during health and safety, there was some talks about doing air quality tests. And it was talked about through the MTA, the EAPC has access to that, do these air quality tests. It's something we've actually did over in Plymouth, had great results with it, very professional company, did a real quality job when they printed it out. Said, I know we're willing to offer that at the buildings, the building here if we need to be. I did talk to the MTA organizer who put it together, he basically said, we're ready to go. We're just waiting to hear from the company. So we're ready, once I hear, we'll let you know. But again, they did a real quality job when we use them and very professional, so.
We're in the district supportive of doing that.
Yeah, and again, if everything's ready to go, we just need to hear from the company.
That sounds great.
Awesome. That'll be that.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. I don't think I printed that out. I did not. Okay. I had meant to bring up Paul to print out.
We're gonna do captain's council first.
Do you want?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they here?
It does get.
Okay, great. If the members of captain's council are here, come right on up, please, and thank you.
So we're happy to have Amara Reese, Avery Murphy here with us this evening to give us an update from the captain's council.
Thank you.
Yes, we did change the order of the meeting so that the captains could present and then move on to their next items this evening. So welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Amara Reese.
I'm Avery Murphy.
And we are the captains of the cheer team here in Carver. We're both seniors. And so since we're captains, we participate in captain's council, which is just all of the captains for all the season sports. We meet every like weekend, we just work on some community service projects. We've done like Halloween baskets for homeless shelters, and we also plan certain things for the school, like the Powderpuff football game.
And being 11 for I think seventh graders.
So our season this year for cheer, I think it's been a really big year for Carver cheer. We have a new coach, and it was our first year competing, back to competition since 2019. A very small team this year, but we got two varsity scores, and we're really happy to just be back, like in the game at least, and just focusing on trying to grow our program more because it's definitely taken like a big hit the past couple of years, just like COVID. We have small numbers, not competing, and so we just wanna rebuild our program. This year, we got to start basketball cheer. So we're cheering through the fall and winter, which has been a lot of fun, a lot of just like figuring things out, but hopefully it'll be smoother next year. And everyone's happy to be able to cheer for an extra season and coming to an end pretty soon. But overall, it's been a great season to be Avery and I's senior year, and having a very good year.
Yeah. That is great.
I just wanna say that I'm very proud of all our new coach, and we only started with eight girls, and we made a routine and a competition in two months. We went out on the competition floor. We got like, I think we got like a 63 something at regionals. Yeah. And I just wanna say I'm so proud of everyone because we came so far.
That's amazing. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and for sharing some more information about cheer.
All right, Avery, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. So I just want to review a few things before we begin. Chair Jen Pratt is gonna be keeping time for each person that speaks. Everyone that would like to speak is welcome to come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and everyone has three minutes to speak. So it is on a time schedule. So as I said, Jen will be keeping time for each person that comes up. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we as a committee, it's not an opportunity for questions and answers, so we're not going to engage in conversation with you. It's an opportunity for you to come up and share your thoughts and your feelings with the committee, which we will all listen to. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that it's not an open dialogue. And we appreciate everyone that wishes to speak. So whoever would like to go first, come right on up to the table.
Just.
Welcome. Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sean Lopes. I've been coaching here in Carver for over a decade. I have coached the majority of the varsity baseball players since they were in Little League. I have an amazing relationship with them and their parents. I've always thought of these kids as my adopted sons, and they know I would never put them in an unhealthy environment. I have coached with many different people, many who would talk down to the kids and make empty promises, they played favorites. And I vowed to only coach at the high school level if the situation was right and the coaches that I'd be coaching with met my standards of what I thought a coach should be. I spent over 12 hours a week for months with Coach Pezon. I watched him not only buy a fence for the team, but put it up himself. He has rented out facilities with his own money so the kids can go and practice. I stayed with him when he would stay after practice if any kid wanted extra work. I know because he's worked with my son on the weekends when he wanted or needed extra work. I saw him defend our team when players were being verbally abusive towards them, and he took the suspension for it. Anyone who's there would tell you the exact same thing. He took a big X next to his name for that. Yet every player and every parent there that day would give him a big thank you because if he didn't stop a fight from breaking out, our kids would have lost a lot more. And I am here for the kids. The players on our team last year that I've spoken with all want him back. Players who have graduated have written letters, none more telling than that of whom Bobby had the parking lot incident with. Again, I was there, I heard it all, and I can say without question, some of the stuff reported was not said or done. Nobody's words should hold more weight than that player who was at the center of that day and a big part of why we're here right now. He made it clear in his letter that he believes Coach Pezon should be the team's head coach, and it would be a huge loss for the kids if he's not. I have yet to hear one player who was on the varsity team last year say they don't want Coach to return, or have any bad things to say about him. He won Coach of the Year voted on by all of the coaches. I think that is very telling. Like I said, I've talked to almost every player, and they want him back. I would hate to think players or parents who didn't play for him are asking for him to be removed. In my opinion, maybe it's just me, but being upset or bitter about not making a team should have no impact on whether he is a worthy coach. The overwhelming majority of players and parents can't be wrong here. Please don't base the decision on hearsay. Please base it on the words of the people who are present during the incidents in question, and there during the countless hours of hard work, honest words, motivation, dedication, and fun. Those are the words you want to hear about a coach, and the only people that can truly tell you whether or not those words apply to Coach Pezon are the players who have played for him and the parents of those players. I have a feeling tonight you will hear just that. I ask you to please fight for our children's wishes and reinstate Bobby Pezon as a Carver baseball varsity coach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nathan Dorado, and I'm a junior captain for the baseball team. Coming into this year, I was so excited. And it was devastating to me to hear a month before the season started that Pezon was not going to be rehired and was not going to be our coach for the upcoming year. And for these past couple of days, it hasn't come off my mind. The only time it has, I've been sleeping or at basketball for two hours. Pezon is such an influential person to me that if I needed him to run through that wall over there for me, he would. No questions asked, he would do it. And what he's done for the program, for all the players, I don't think it could rival, I don't think it can match not reinstating him as a coach. And I just want any of you to think, like, how many of you actually do know Bobby Pezon, the honest man that I know, the one that put up the fence that he paid for, the one that is teaching kids how to hit even when he's not gonna be the coach, the one that paid for the cages in the winter, the first season, when he came here? Because that's Pezon I know. Thank you.
I'm Derek Lopes, junior captain as well. And for me, there's no coach that has ever done more for me as a player or a person than Coach Pezon. Not only has he taught me how to be a better baseball player, but he's also taught me how to be a better person. No coaches ever loved me or respected me as much as he has. For me, baseball just isn't the same without him. I believe that he should not have been let go, and that he should be reinstated as our coach for this upcoming season and for all future seasons. Bye.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Bobby Rainey. This is.
I'm Tyler Lennox.
We're both captains for the baseball team. And last year, when we came in for our first practice, we barely, well, we both know him, but we don't know him, we didn't know him as a baseball coach. And he taught us a lot since the first day to the last practice, just not even be a better baseball player, but being a better person in general. He paid for almost everything that we have for our baseball program. He bought the cages for the winter. He put up the fence. He just made everybody a better person in general. And through every altercation he had or argument or everything, he always made it right in every way possible that he could.
I've known Bobby since I was a little kid. I mean, he's the biggest role model for me I've ever met. I mean, I'm a three-sport cabinet at the school. I played AAU, I played every sport. That's the best coach I've ever had. And I mean that with everything I got. Not just about baseball, it's about checking in on us through winter, fall, our grades, how we're doing in school. It's not just about winning baseball games. It's way more than that to him. And he's just, I just don't think that was the right decision to let him go. He's one of the greatest guys I've ever met.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm Tom Mannix. I'm a dad. I didn't always gonna have to follow Tyler Lennox. That's pretty tough. My son's over there with the rest of the team, and I'm pretty sure that's the entire team. I hope that speaks for itself. I am just an outsider because all I do is I sit in the stands and I watch the games. Watching this team is one of my greatest experiences in sports in a fairly long lifetime. What can I say? Education means in loco parentis, we trust our children with basically strangers, and we hope for the best. I couldn't possibly have hoped for any better than Coach Pezon. I really don't know him at all. I've only spoken to him a few times. But the more I went past the shock of hearing that Coach Pezon was not coming back to learning more about what's going on, there's been an injustice. This was not fully investigated, not from all sides. There's been an injustice, and I know there's fair people up there. And so I just really, really hope that, what a great thing it would have been to win the championship. I'd have a greater feeling if this wrong was righted. I thought of this season as Hoosiers, but there's actually another movie that I'd love to see the ending of, and that's It's a Wonderful Life. There was an injustice done, all right? You know what I mean? And at the end of that movie, we all know that George Bailey's the richest man in town. I'd like to see Coach Pezon have his job back. He deserves it. He deserves a fair shot. And I'll end you with, hopefully a bell rings, an angel gets his wings, and these guys get a chance to get their coach back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rooney. My son is a junior at Carver Middle High School, and he is the captain for the upcoming 2023 baseball season. He has been fortunate enough to have his father coach him in many sports over the years. And I didn't think that there could be a coach that would come close to him until Coach Pezon got the head coach position. He took a baseball program that has not had much success in the past and turned it into a winning team, even making the tournament and making the Elite Eight, and we even won the Tobin Division. It wasn't by luck or by chance. It was due to the fact that we finally had a coach who was committed and believed in our kids. Coach Pezon has dedicated his time to our kids, and it's not just in season. Out of season as well, he's always sending emails, a text, or a simple phone call saying, hey, what's Bobby working on for the upcoming season? Anything I can do to help him out? And I understand that a decision was made, and that's why I'm here to fight it, just like Coach Pezon would always fight for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Roberta Dorado. My son is also a captain for the upcoming season. He is a junior in Carver, and he's a three-season athlete. And because of this, he has had many different coaches over the years. Coach Pezon is one of the two coaches that I feel has gone above and beyond creating a positive impact on my son's life, so much that Nathan has had thoughts about not playing baseball and potentially leaving Carver due to this news. I'm aware of the situation that it's led to today, and my family still sits here supporting the return of Coach Pezon. From the first game to the last game, Coach Pezon was there for every single player on and off the field. Once the season ended, Coach Pezon didn't go away. We saw him at football, we saw him at basketball, home and away games, supporting these kids, doing what they love, playing sports. Coach Pezon has had other positive impacts for the team, like the removable fence that he purchased out of his own pocket, installed it, the baseball golf tournament that he played a big part in planning and participating in. He was nominated Coach of the Year from his peers, peers across the South Shore, not just Carver. And don't forget the winning banner that he brought to Carver, the first baseball banner, all while, all doing this after the incident that led us to today. As a parent of a player, I ask you to review any new information and confirmations that you've received over the last week, and just think that maybe the wrong decision was made. And remember, for the kids, you can make things right by being a great role model. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Lennox. My son also is a junior captain for the upcoming baseball season. I've known Bobby for 40 years. I went to high school with Bobby. We both were student athletes when Carver Middle High School opened. Myself and my friends always looked up to Bobby for the person he is. 30 years later, he was, I was, sorry. My son was lucky enough to be coached by Bobby. The passion and knowledge Bobby has for the game of baseball is unmatched. Tyler was not sure if he was going to continue to play baseball in high school, but that all changed because of Bobby. The time, energy, and knowledge that Bobby has given this baseball program and our boys is incredible. This baseball team won a banner for the first time in school history. Bobby was voted Coach of the Year 2022. We made it to the state tournament, the Elite Eight. Our boys are competitive and want to win, and Carver is finally getting noticed. We get noticed when we have good coaches that lead their team. Bobby's that coach. Bobby shows up at our kids' basketball and football games, home and away. He even drives to Hull. No one wants to drive to Hull. Bobby checks in throughout the year with our boys, asking how they're doing and if they need anything. That is a great coach. Bobby is an amazing person, coach, friend, and mentor. I hope you can consider all these great qualities in him and reconsider your decision. It means a lot to us parents and our boys if we can keep our coach. Thank you.
Hello, Mark Dorado. I too have a son on the team. We all know who he is, whatever. I'm not gonna sit here and talk about money paid, any of that. I wanna talk about the fact that he's like a father figure for all of those kids. And like any other father, like myself, we make mistakes. But like, when you make an error on the baseball field, you put it behind you, you move on, and you learn and become better for it. I hope we could do that with him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Bobby Pezon. For those of you that don't know me, most do, some don't. I'm the Carver baseball coach, varsity baseball coach for 2022, Coach of the Year. I grew up in Carver and attended the Carver school system, and now as a parent myself, I've been lucky enough to be the varsity baseball coach for the same town I graduated from for the past two years. As you've been made aware, I was fired last Wednesday from my coaching position. I was blindsided by this news and beside myself. It was, this was way more than a job for me. It's not about money. It's about teaching these boys to better themselves, to grow as humans, all while playing a sport with as much passion as I have. It's never been about money for me, nothing like that. It's about me giving back to this community that has given me a lot when I was a young man. When I was a little lost, when I was a kid, I was able back to come back to Carver High School and be better for it. And I'm trying to get back to it. I do deeply regret the way I handled the parking lot incident at the beginning of last season. I embarrass myself, my player, and my school, and I will always be sorry for that. But thankfully, myself and the coaches and this team were able to learn from my mistake. We had open conversations and made it a much tighter group moving forward. I hope you can appreciate the fact that I was fairly new to coaching when I got this job at this level and didn't have much help from the old athletic department, which by the way, changed drastically over the last past month, and I'm happy for the school with that. I see great changes for the kids in the future. In two seasons of our baseball, our on-field accomplishments speak for themselves. But as much as I've been teaching these kids about baseball, they've been teaching me more how to be a better coach and a better man. As long as we keep learning from each other out there, there isn't anything we can't accomplish. The amount of support that current and past players are showing me, along with so many parents, makes me realize just how much I mean to these families and this community, and I don't want to let them down. I have two coaches by my side, well, three coaches by my side, Coach Troop, Timmy Troop, and Mike Troop, and Coach Lopes. And these boys are respected, loved, loved long before they ever met me and together. We make a great team as we can, as we all saw and heard tonight over the past week, the lengths that they are willing to go to keep us all together. We became a family, and we would like to remain a family. I was invited to the captain's practice last weekend, and I was happy to be able to attend. After hearing that some of the players are going to quit baseball, literally walk off this team and looking to transfer out of this district, I knew that I had to talk to them. The last thing I wanted to see is have, is see is Carver baseball is going to lose good baseball players and even better students because of a mistake I made in the past. I do hope these boys think about our conversations and have a big change of heart and stay in Carver and play baseball for this school. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. Thank to the players, all these guys and all these parents that are supporting me. It's really humbling, all the support I've got. I mean, I know there's some negativity possibly, but I really want, I want this job for the kids, and I want to continue on with what I did. I did make a mistake, Mr. Neef, I understand that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I know I don't have to ask anyone, it feels weird.
Hello.
Good evening. I do not have a dog in the fight. My name is William Ketchen. I don't live in Carver. I have no children that attend Carver Public Schools. I do have a godson that plays on this team, so I took an interest in following this team last year. I attended, I believe, all but two games. I was thoroughly impressed with this coaching staff. A little bit about my background, I've been a certified Massachusetts school teacher since 1994. I played at the college level, played football and baseball at the college level, I've coached at the college level, and I've coached at the high school level. When word that this coach was dismissed, I was shocked. My kids belong to a club north of, up in Rockland, a baseball club, and it's amazing how fast news spreads. And everyone at the baseball club, and these are former players that played professional baseball, coaches that are in the, these guys are in the Hall of Fame. It's amazing, the network, how everyone, everyone crosses paths with each other, and they all supported Coach Pezon 100%. So I don't really, I'm not really sure what went down in the parking lot. And I can tell you that, you know, when you're coaching boys, young men, high school men, you've gotta be, you've gotta be direct. And you know, whatever was heard and was reported, you know, we live in a world today where people are overly offensive, offended. They're offended constantly. I think one thing that needs to be looked at is, in all schools, is the mission statement. These mission, these utopian, idealistic mission statements that are written, you cannot live up to them. It's like a lesson plan. You have a measurement and evaluation. You're never gonna get 100%. There's gonna, there's gotta be some room for error. So just, the mission statement has to have a little, has to be looked at from that perspective. You're never gonna get 100%. I believe that I followed this team and his coaching staff, not just Coach Pezon, but his whole coaching staff. Coach Lopes is the only coach that I know that follows, that records all the stats the night of each game. So you can go on max preps, and you can find every kid's batting at. He's the only coach in the entire state that I know, that knows that can do that. So I respect him, and again, I don't have a dog in the fight. I drove 30 miles, 30 minutes down here just to say that. And I've never, I don't even know Coach Pezon personally. I've never met him.
Have I met you?
Okay, so that's all I have to say. Good night.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And I didn't preface before we started, this is the one, only time that comments from the public are allowed. So if you think there's anything that you would like to say about anything, now is the time to do so. Okay, seeing no, no, I was just gonna say Zoom, seeing no one coming to the microphone, right? Yeah, I don't have to look in the chat today because there is no Zoom. Okay, so we are going to move on to approval of minutes for the January 9, 2023 open session minutes.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 9, 2023 open session.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And over to communications.
Okay, I just want to share a brochure that actually we've sent home to all of our students in grades four through eight. Really, one of our goals is to try to promote the Carver School District. And, you know, we knew that other schools in the area are promoting themselves to our students in grades four through eight, and we felt that, obviously, our students are all here, they're here, but we want to take that next step and try to celebrate some of the great things that are happening within our school district. So I just wanted to share this brochure with the committee and let them know that it was sent home, mailed home this week. So I also want to recognize that we're excited tonight to have Lily Mercer with us here. She's as a student advisory rep. Lily's going to be with us here on the 27th, and I told her that I might ask her, ask her a little bit about the brochure, just in terms of, Lily's involved in one of our pathways programs, so I don't know if she wanted to take a minute to talk about, or Lily, if you can tell us what pathway you're in and how that's been for you and how that experience has been for you as a student at Carver Middle High School.
Can you just, can you use the microphone? Just so people at home, the recording can hear you. Thank you.
The biotech pathway where I have to complete a series of science classes, online advanced classes, to graduate with the biotechnology profession. I think pathways are a great addition to the school, and I think it offers very new and great opportunities to our students and to the school, and it can give them a head start on subjects that they need to learn for their careers.
Lily, please share.
Thank you.
That is great. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, just wanted to make people aware of the brochure.
Absolutely. I got mine in the mail yesterday. Was great to see. I think it's a great way for us to celebrate, right? The great things that happen in our district every day. So thank you for sharing your story with us, Lily. Okay. Yeah, reports from the superintendent.
So personnel updates. We have had some movement since our last meeting. We've had some new hires. Our new hires are Nancy Tetra as an ESP at Carver Middle High School, Stacy Weigren as an ESP at Carver Middle High School, Stacy Tennyson as a food service worker, and Nicole Thompson as a 7D driver. We had a transfer, so Cody Nicholson moved from ESP at Carver Middle High School to interventionist, and Cody replaced Ginny Machado, who retired effective 1/23/2023, who was the previous interventionist at the middle high school. So we'd just like, you know, Ginny actually did a retirement party on the day of her birthday that was held at the Cabbie Shack, and then there'll be actually a retirement party, or she'll be part of the retirement reception at the end of the year for all of our staff to retire. So congratulations to Ginny Machado on her retirement.
Absolutely.
I would love to invite Ms. Kramp back up to the mic, and she's put together a presentation for us, actually, for the music curriculum at the elementary school. And I don't know if you want to preference the presentation a little bit, show the presentation first, which do you want to do?
Whatever works. Hi, it's really nice to see you all.
Hi.
You guys are all fabulous. I'm happy to be here. Thank you so much for letting us perform. It's wonderful to have some of your students in the classroom with me, to be on committees with all of you. So there's just a little video that the kids had the voice instead of me, so if you want to check it out, and then let me know if you have questions after.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I think that's going to be a first.
I like music because I love music because I love music because I love the same. I love music because it makes me feel a lot of different ways. I love music because it helps me calm down. Music makes us special people. It's a really new way to spread how you are, to work sound music with me. Music makes me happy. I love music because it helps me calm down. I love music because it makes me feel peace. Music helps me calm down. It always goes for me. I love music because it's fun and fun, and it makes me happy outside. I love music because it makes me perfect. I love music because it makes me happy. I love music because it makes people want to feel happy. Everybody is so talented, and the music helps us to give me memories. Music makes us all better. In every music class, music is important. It's important to be positive and be that music is. In grade A 1 and 2, we often focus on music and tune in at practice daily, studying this and using so long and better. It's important to like it by your own, especially with music and exploring yourself. Even if you're needing it, if you're ready, have the body ready. I love music. It's supposed to be a practice that first take off and you can prepare for the future. We also have a lot of culture. Ready for the ultimate. Last year, we wanted to join every school in the class for the first annual gift. The chanting is starting this spring. I love music because it makes me happy. Ready for the ultimate. For bringing the report back. Last year, we wanted to join every school in the class for the first annual gift. The chanting is starting this spring. I love music because it makes me happy. We have to give what's important to the game, but they bow to the team. This is why you can join the band. For the last performance for nursing homes, it is me and Ginny's time to build my future. Thank you. We celebrate this occasion. We celebrate the best, fifth grade concert, third grade concert, fifth grade talent show, school-wide festivities, and even the birthday award for Bethany. Music makes us confident. Music makes us creators. Music makes us curious. Music makes us passionate. Music makes us better people. Music can bring people together. Music matters to all of the children. We are taught that Carver is, and we're in today. We're building a future, starting today. Respectful, responsible, ready to learn. Here is start, and now is our turn. Carver, Carver is, and we're in today. We're building a future, starting today. So it's okay, I don't know if you have a follow-up to your video.
I think the kids said it all, but if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? That was just amazing. I mean, thank you.
Looking forward to Thursday night.
Oh, yes. We'll be squeaking. It's going to be great.
It's going to be great.
I just want to say, as both a school committee member from seeing it from up here, from feedback I've received from the community, to as a parent who has a child in your class, you have been an amazing addition to our teaching staff, and we are so lucky to have you in Carver.
Thank you. I feel so happy to be working in such a wonderful place, and I absolutely love the elementary school, from administration to school committee to students to staff. So I thank you so much for your time, and I hope you guys get out of here quickly and soon.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Come back anytime, anytime.
Yeah, we love concerts.
Everybody want to present after that?
So that's why Mrs. Cabral is not here this year.
That was awesome. Did you have a video?
I don't have a video.
Missed opportunity.
Unfortunately, Mrs. Cabral is not feeling well today. She was, actually called me about an hour before the meeting, was trying to explain all the reasons why she should come to the meeting tonight, and I told her that if she needs to go home. So I'm not going to do as well as she would have done, but I'm going to talk a little bit about a schedule update and some changes we're going to be instituting, actually this week at the middle high school in terms of the schedule. So as I think everybody knows, this is the current schedule as it exists, and we have the wind block and the power hour, we originally referred to it as, combined with our lunches. And as Tom referenced during his presentation, you know, we've been talking over the last couple of months about making some changes to this. And the basics, the big thing the community needs to know is the basic structure of the schedule is not changing. Students are going to still have seven classes, they're still going to have five classes a day with two classes dropping, the classes are still going to be 65 minutes in length. So like none of those core components of the schedule is changing. We just have decided to try to remove the wind block or the power hour from the lunch period. And the reason why is that lunches have just been too big, quite honestly. And maybe I'll ask Lily to weigh in on that a little bit as a student representative. You know, there's just, the lines are too long, we're having a hard time serving everybody. Some students are coming up for lunch, even though the block's 29, 30 minutes, you know, they're not coming up for lunch with 10 minutes left. Then, so there's a line literally almost of that whole lunch. Is that true, Lily? And so it's difficult, it's challenging. And we've actually had a few students say, you know, just based on the length of the line, that it's really not, it's almost they're staying away from school lunch, they're bringing their lunch from home. And obviously, you know, on some levels, in terms of equity, we have some concerns about that because right now, you know, the state is still providing free lunches for all students, so every student in the district has free breakfast and free lunch. And we'd hope that students, you know, hopefully that's not a financial constraint for some students that they're feeling like, I can't get through the lunch line, so now I'm going to find a way to bring lunch, or I'm not going to eat lunch, which would be a terrible thing to have happen. So obviously, we're, you know, there was concern about that. The other concern, very directly, is that by integrating the wind period into the lunch, it gives students kind of a natural default that they can say to wander. And not all students do that, but there's a small percentage of students who are wandering, maybe where they're supposed to be. If the question is, well, where are you supposed to be? They have an easy answer, I'm supposed to be in lunch. Surely, teachers can check that through our MindFlex program, but they have to go into the computer system. You know, there's a reality piece of that may not be happening, so we're feeling like by removing the wind from the lunch, we're going to be able to have a little bit more, a little better control in terms of some student movement and some student wandering and getting that into a little bit better situation. You know, we had some, we looked at some different options. We actually brought three options to the APC, in which we discussed those with the teachers. They did a survey from the teacher's perspective of which option they like better in terms of making the change. Obviously, you had to be considerate of our school lunch employees, you know, cafeteria workers. A change in the schedule is going to change their day a little bit, so, you know, many of our cafeteria workers work multiple jobs, so that's one of several jobs that they have or a second job, so they might have to leave at a certain time. So we had to take, so what we're going to, we don't necessarily, it may not be the optimum. You know, we might even look at something a little bit different next year in terms of time, but we'll have a little bit more control. I'm not saying we will. We're going to feel this out and see how it goes. So this is the new schedule that's going to be, actually start on Thursday of this week. So again, same structure, five, students have five classes a day, two classes drop, class lengths are 65 minutes. Notice the wind block just moves down to after what we're calling the lunch block. So what's going to happen during this period F, you can see it's 10:49 to 12:24, which is a lot longer than 65 minutes, because that includes a 25-minute lunch for everybody. So some students will have first lunch, so there's going to be three lunch periods. So, you know, that's going to be that. It's really going to minimize the students in the cafeteria. I assisted the administration in terms of building the lunch schedule and making this revision, so I did some of the lunch numbers. Like I think the biggest lunch is going to be about 311 students, which is, that's, they're going to feel that difference.
So that lunch block is a combined academic and lunch?
Correct.
So people might start in a class, have lunch, and then go back to the class, some will have lunch and then go to class, some will have class and then go to lunch?
This might be a little confusing, but this is the visual they've created for the teachers, is that, so if you have first lunch, so if you're in seventh grade, and if you're in grades eight through 12 and have a math class, a computer class, a health class, a PE class, or an internship, you're going to go to first lunch. You're going to go to lunch from 10:49 to 11:14, then from 11:19 to 12:24, which is 65 minutes, you're going to go to class. If you have second lunch, which is grade six and then eight through 12, social studies and business classes, you know, we tried to put the fewest number of classes in the second lunch because it splits the class in half. So obviously, our phys ed classes don't want to be split in half, some of our athletics don't want to be split in half. I don't know if anybody really wants to be split in half, but someone has to be in second lunch. Historically, social studies always been in second lunch. When I was a teacher in the building 25 years ago, and we had three lunches, social studies had second lunch. So that's kind of been fairly, they're used to it. They've done second lunch before, they know the process for that. So those students would go to class from 10:49 to 11:22, then they'll leave and go to lunch from 11:25 to 11:50, then they'll go back to class from 11:53 to 12:24. And then if you have third lunch, you'll go to class from 10:49 to 11:54, and that's, notice, the eighth graders, because of the way the schedule's set up this year, our eighth graders are incorporated into some of our nine through 12 classes. So, you know, we're going to have a sixth grade lunch, a seventh grade lunch, and then the third lunch is going to be all eight through 12, that we know sixth and seventh graders in there. And if you have science, tech ed, English, athletics, foreign language, special education courses, they'll go to class from 10:49 to 11:54, and then they'll go to lunch from 11:59 to 12:24. So it maintains that, you know, 65-minute class, 25-minute lunch for everybody with the passing periods incorporated into that schedule. And then this is just maybe an easier way to look at it of who has first lunch. We are, the other thing we're going to do is we're going to put the divider back up. So right now, we haven't been using the divider, and students have all been in the cafeteria together. So we're going to put the divider up, and sixth grade lunch, the sixth graders are going to sit on one side together, separated from eight through 12. Seventh graders will sit on one side together, separated from eight through 12. Sorry, I misspoke. Mrs. Cabral would have gotten this right. We're going to go back to middle school, so sixth graders and eighth graders, the eighth graders who have lunch will be on one side together, nine through 12 on the other side. Seventh and eighth graders will be together, nine through 12 on the other side. And then the period where there are no sixth and seventh graders, we're going to have the eighth graders on one side, nine through 12 on the other side. And the reason why that is, is we do allow the nine through 12 students to use the foyers. So we have the setup of the, you know, the comfortable seating and the three foyers that students can eat lunch in. Six, seventh, and the eighth grader's not allowed to do that. So separating, putting them on a different side of the cafeteria is going to be easier to maintain that. Because I will say, that's the other thing that's happened a little bit, you know, especially with some of our eighth graders, you know, sometimes it's hard to maybe make that distinction between an eighth grader and a ninth grader. And when the cafeteria is open and they're like, hey, I'm going out to the lobby because I can, because, maybe they're not ninth graders, but they go out to the lobby anyhow. It's just hard for, you know, we have cafeteria staff, but they may not know every single student in what grade they're in, and so this is going to make all that a little bit cleaner, a little bit clearer. So that is, in a nutshell, the change. We're hoping that it's going to allow students to We're hoping that it's going to allow students to, you know, more easily access lunch, and we're hoping it's going to cut down on maybe some of the movement and confusion that we have during the wind period. Because ultimately, you know, during the new wind block, stu, students have to be in wind. Everyone's assigned to a wind, that's where they need to be, it's just like another class. Where combining it with lunch has made it less like another class. Louis and I talked about this a little bit, I don't know if you have any thoughts about old schedule, new schedule differences, what your thoughts are about it?
I think that it's better if we have first lunch, because now we have like more separate lunches, so we can keep our lunch every day. There are downsides to it, like we can't pick what lunch it can be, we can't keep lunch with them every day, but it's, you'll get the food.
And so there were a couple students that, the one thing they love about the wind block currently is they get to select their wins, so they really get to select who they have lunch with.
Right.
Now they less, they're not going to be able to select who they have lunch with from the standpoint of they're going to be lunch with whatever class they're in that period. And, you know, it really gets a little confusing because we looked at the schedule, there's actually four different periods that have lunch. So they can have lunch in their F block, their G block, their E block, or their D block. Now, in the old schedule, though, going way back pre-COVID schedule, all seven periods rotated through the lunch period. So actually, they could have lunch in any of their seven periods, and there were actually 21 different lunches, you know. So we used to have to schedule for 21 different lunches and do the balance and all that. So this is actually not as complicated as it once was, and students will, I think students will adjust to this fine. So this was introduced to all the students today. They had advisory for wind block as day one, so on day one, that's where they pick what they're going to do for the rest of the week. So they explained it to them. Just happens that tomorrow's a half day, so the half day schedule is totally different, so tomorrow's just going to be a half day anomaly schedule. And then we're going to implement this on Thursday. We're still going to be serving lunch during the half day because that's a requirement, and we'll be doing that. And that schedule's changed a little bit, too. So we'll open it up to any questions about the change. I think Mrs. Cabral communicated it in her weekly newsletter, I believe, that went home either Friday or yesterday. Do you have a question? I don't know. I know Mrs. Cabral is putting it into her weekly newsletter. I'm not asking, Louis, I'm not asking to confirm that from you, we have more than maybe the members of the committee, because you would have received the newsletter, and your question, you may not have, that's fine, I just know that was her intention in terms of communicating to parents and the community.
Anyone have any questions? I did hear about it, but it was from my students. So I, I haven't checked that email address, so are you excited, Louis? In some ways, right? In some ways, yeah. I can't even imagine the amount of hours that it took to put this together. So thank you to you, Mrs. Cabral, and everyone that worked on putting this together. I hope it will be helpful so that more students have more time to eat school lunch.
Yeah, and be more engaged in lunch, and be where that's supposed to be.
Exactly, exactly.
All of us.
I think we all remember those days. But I'm sure that was a tremendous amount of work, so thank you very much for.
Yeah, and we're, and we're just going to look at it and see if this is, if this has improved some of the things we're concerned about. We figured it was better to take a look at it for the second half of the year instead of waiting. In, in general, my, my, I don't want to speak out of, sorry, I should edit myself, so I shouldn't speak out of turn. I think in general, right now, people are supportive of the concept of the wind block.
Yep.
And we'll just, as we go into next year, and just, you know, try to feel how it fits best in the schedule. All right, so that will start on Thursday of this week.
All right, great. Glad I don't have to start on Thursday of this week, but thank you for that. Okay, and that takes us to?
FY24 budget update, so Ron will give us an update of where we stand in terms of our FY24 budget.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you all. So I'll be brief because I realize I've got a few different financial updates today, and I don't want to put you all to sleep.
Never, Ron, you would never put us to sleep with the budget update, right? Am I right?
I don't know about that, but you've got it in front of you here, and I'll try to move along, but if at any point you have a question, feel free to stop me, I'm happy to drill down further. You also have the line by line, your backup as well, down to the penny for everything too, but this just gives you an executive summary. So I'm going to start with our budget calendar, just a reminder, this is sort of where you are in the process. We started the budget back in October, it's a fall process to start for us, and we do multiple iterations. So here we are in Jan, in January, February, we're really set the revenue projections, and now we're just finalizing, you know, key cost centers, we're doing the cross check with the leadership team to make sure I haven't missed anything, and present to you all, hopefully, with the goal of going to March with a very similar budget where you get public hearing and then a vote going on to a annual town meeting. Here's your presentation today, it's very similar to what you've seen before, we'll touch upon the priorities, and then we break the budget presentation into two major parts. Start with the expenses, that's all about how we help support student learning here, and then we talk about the revenue, how we provide the funding to do exactly that. A little bit about your priorities, you know, one of the things I always should mention when we're talking about money is that sometimes we can get stuck in the weeds of the dollars and cents, and just to remind everybody that these dollars and cents represent your school department, they represent the services that we provide for kids, they represent all the programs that, that students love. And so our primary goal is to make sure we maintain services for kiddos. I have links, obviously, to our educational blueprint and the pathways. The only, the theme that's unique to FY24, I'd say, is that we've started to return to that pre-pandemic funding and service level, and you'll see that throughout the Like with every budget, it's organized by the DESI chart of accounts, you see each section and the category of expense that it represents. I'll go through by each section as DESI lays them out, I'll give you a quick highlight between 23 and 24. I'll be brief in the first couple of sections because you've seen these already, but I'll spend a lot more time on that 9,000 series, that's where you have the majority of your change in 24. Your 1,000 series with the DESI chart of accounts outlines your district-wide leadership, you can see you're at about 717 for FY24. Couple of highlights, it does include that Raptor security system at both schools now, it's reflective of some of the marketing materials that Mr. Nief highlighted earlier today, as well as some increases in administrative software, Microsoft Suite, Aspen, which is your SIS, it includes all of your student data, protects it, and so on. Your 2,000 series instructional services, again, we developed that number, that 17134, by taking a look at every single employee, extrapolating out their FY24 steps and lanes based on their CBA or agreement. It also includes, you know, level one supplies, certainly, and this year, it reflects going back to the pre-pandemic levels of staffing, and that does yield some savings. So there are some COVID positions that were implemented during the pandemic and in the wake of the pandemic that are no longer in the FY24 budget. It includes COVID intervention ESPs, there's six FTAs for that, as well as COVID counselor and interventionist two FTEs for that, and COVID summer services, all of which were designed to help students catch up on mislearning that, that happened during the pandemic. Your 3,000 series is support of our services, same idea, we itemize it by staff member, salary projections down to the penny for their CBA in FY24. Similar to your 2,000 series, it does reflect returning to that pre-pandemic service levels, so there's some COVID-related positions that are coming off the books in 24, two COVID lunch monitors, as well as COVID nurse and health assistant. One thing I do want to mention, so it does include the athletics program as typical, maintaining service, but it also adds an initial year of uniform replacement. The district hadn't really had a formalized uniform replacement cycle in place, and so thanks to great work with Principal Cabral, as well as our interim athletic director, Mr. McGinnis, and certainly with the support of Superintendent Nief, we're able to include that first year of uniform replacement cycle with the expectation that we would continue to have that cycle year on, year off. 4,000 series operations and maintenance, it's level funded, level budget for the large majority of it. The increases reflect changes in costs for goods predominantly for inflation. The one big highlight there, we're going to be going back to pre-pandemic HVAC use in the middle high schools. During the pandemic, the HVAC system was essentially open wide, it meant that we were heating all of the air and then venting it so we could bring in new fresh air. Important to keep your fresh air levels maximized, very expensive in terms of heating throughout a winter. So we're going back to pre-pandemic HVAC use, and that'll, that'll yield some savings as well on the operations end of things. Fixed costs and benefits is not really exciting, but a couple of highlights here. So as you remember, FY23 was the first year where we incorporated our health insurance with the town, and so to keep them back in your mind as we go through our expenses, I'll talk a little about health insurance, but I'm actually going to talk about it in the revenue side of things, because it's now a shared expense with the town. Your 9,000 series, it's your tuitions and out-of-district special education costs. This is really where you see the large majority of your movement between 23 and 24. Little background on this, what we typically do is, as of February 1, we set this line in the sand for out-of-district service projections. It's one of the more difficult things to make projections on because IDEA requires that all districts, not just Carver, provide special education services to students as needed regardless of cost. And that means if a student moves into a community or becomes, comes up on the radar, if you will, in terms of student who has severe needs and ultimately can't be served here in the community, those costs go to these tuitions, 9,000 series out-of-district. As you see, we're at about 25% year-to-year increase with out-of-district, which is a significant uptick from FY23. It's due in part to two major factors. The first is simply new IEPs that require those services, but the other is a 14% increase in the actual rate that private out-of-district special education programs are charging all schools. And I'll talk a little more about some of the work that Superintendent Nief, a lot of the superintendents in the region and business managers are doing to advocate with the state regarding that, that price hike. So what do we do about that increase on the 9,000 series? A couple of things, assuming that the projections do hold firm, the first is that Carver can apply for extraordinary relief. It's essentially a subset of Circuit Breaker where school districts like ours, who experience some increase in out-of-district costs over a certain threshold, can apply to the state and say, hey, look, we've got this increased cost, we have some kiddos that have severe needs, and the state takes a look at your application, and if qualified, provides additional Circuit Breaker funding essentially to offset that. And obviously, Circuit Breaker is our other option. And then the third is, again, Carver joining some leaders from around the state to have conversations with DESI, as well as OSD around how they came up with that 14% rate increase, which is pretty substantial. So more to come on that last bullet as we start to explore our options with the state. Big picture, take the 10,000-foot executive summary look here, all in, your budget for FY24 to operate the Carver Public Schools, $24,556,403. That's about a 3.6% increase year-to-year. Please note that's prior to any of your budget offsets, right? So grants and those sorts of things, which we'll get to in a moment. Here's your analysis, you've got a pretty streamlined budget, 90% of your overall operating budget's dedicated to student service, with about 70% specific just to direct instruction, only 7% for O&M and technology, and just 3% for administration. That's a pretty trimmed budget, really by any regard, and your graphic just kind of gives you a visual of that. So that's the expenses, we'll change gears and talk about how we pay for this whole thing. Your revenue is broken up into two major components, the first is Chapter 70, which is essentially the state funding from the Commonwealth, and that's combined here in Carver with our local funding. The other portion of your revenue are what we call annual offsets and one-time offsets, things like grants and school choice and Circuit Breaker, they're funding sources outside of our primary source, but they do support a large section of your budget. I like this visual because it gives you a representation of where your funding comes from. So you can see your total funding for FY24, $22,5218. A little bit about this funding, Carver utilizes the local funding formula, and I've mentioned this before, I just have to mention it again, not every community is as fortunate as Carver to have collaboration between the school department and town departments, and there's often in other communities, lots of squabbling over the Chapter 70 money, over the local money. Carver's fortunate to have that collaboration and that trust and confidence with each other. And so we have a local funding formula that essentially takes all the Chapter 70 funding for schools, as well as all the local funding, puts it together, and then just backs out some of the shared costs, like insurance, now in FY23, we do insurance, but snow removal, Plymouth County retirement, those sorts of things. One thing that's especially of, that's of note between our first meeting and this meeting is when we first started taking a look at our projections for revenue, our health insurance was being projected at 8%, which is a pretty substantial increase. Right now, as of our last gateway meeting, we're projected at 3%. And so prior to the FY23 shift of our insurance, that would have been expense, but now that allows us to have essentially more revenue because they shared cost right up at the top. Do you want to go to the next one? That's nice. This is the same data, just presented a little bit differently. The takeaway here is that you see that blue line that represents the state aid, that Chapter 70 Massachusetts funding, it's relatively stagnant from FY18 to 24's projection, which means that the communities, not just Carver, but all communities, have to shoulder a larger burden of supporting their services, including education. So that cost to provide service, that local cost, the orange line, continues to diverge from that local state line. One of the challenges that we, we're going to continue to see here in Carver, and again, across the state, is that more and more communities are going to have to shoulder a larger portion of service because state aid is relatively flat. One of the drivers on that, if you want to go to the next slide, one of the drivers for state aid is enrollment. And again, you see on the right-hand side, that's your enrollment. Like most communities in Massachusetts, Carver's enrollment has declined over the years. State has a hold harmless provision, which essentially gives us a minimum increase per pupil, which ensures that our funding doesn't go down, but it also means that our funding doesn't dramatically improve or increase, and that we don't really realize a significant portion of the Student Opportunity Act, SOA. That graphic is a nice segue for me to talk a little bit about offsets as well. One of the enrollment benefits that Carver has been able to leverage over the past several years has been school choice, and so, you can see a little better in this one, I changed the colors from our last one. Those dark tips of the bar, if you will, those represent your school choice enrollments. And so you can see the large majority of your enrollment, and then topped off by school choice students. This year, that represents $400,000 in offsetting revenue, which is a pretty substantial portion of your budget. There are two kinds of offsets to your revenue, again, the first is the annual offset, those are typical things that you expect to be relatively reliable. We have Circuit Breaker, school choice, a few major grants, Title I IDEA, and we collect tuitions for preschool. All in, you're at $1.67 million in annual offsets. One-time offsets are a little more temporary, usually get some one-time offset, but as you can see in 23, we had nearly $700,000 in offset, a large majority of that was COVID-related funding. In FY24, we're starting to wean off of some of that COVID funding and some of that one-time offset, so our offsets are down by about 40%, and that's intentional, and our goal will be to continue to reduce that reliance on one-time offsets in FY25, as the remainder of those pandemic-related funds dissolve. So here's your revenue summary. Again, if you remember, your expenses was at 3.6% overall year-to-year, your revenue is here at 3.7. Those stacked bars are helpful, especially that FY24 bar, your dark blue there is, you know, your local aid, that's the majority of your revenue, your funding for your school department. Your annual offsets is in the dark gray, and then that light gray top represents those one-time offsets. Again, our goal as we start to get into 25, we really phase out those one-time offsets. Here's your roll-up for FY24, this is the slide that I'm sure everyone really cares the most about. Again, your operations at 22.48, your revenue is at 22.5. All in, you have a balanced budget prepared for FY24 with a surplus of, you know, 1/10 of 1%. We have been having some discussions with the town as they're continuing to work on their budget as well, and we propose committing the, you know, $17,000 remaining there to help offset the rising SRO costs and support the overall town budget as they complete their, their work. So next steps, again, continue to work with our colleagues in the town as, you know, their budget comes into focus. We plan to present the budget for public hearing and school committee vote in March with final appropriation for annual town meeting. Again, you've got the line-by-line with you as well, and if there's any questions, that you've got anything FY24, we have an answer for you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. My, it froze on me on the overall summary page. Pull that up again for a second. Is there any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Are we voting? We're not voting on this tonight.
No, no, no. So we do a public hearing probably in our next meeting in February, on February 27. And then we'd actually look to vote the budget at the March meeting.
Okay.
Yes. So Ron, I just want to say thank you very much, as always, very succinct, but yet very detailed at the same time. I think we all appreciate the work that you put into making this easily digestible for all of us. So we appreciate that and the transparency and the work that you've done with the town on behalf of the district, very grateful for. So thank you very much. That brings us...
You've got more Ron stuff, I think.
Yeah, we got a quick, you know, upcoming events.
And then back to Ron, right?
Ron presentation.
Well, the '23 stuff.
Quick look at our upcoming events for the next couple of months.
I'm sure it's probably jam-packed.
It is jam-packed, so we're excited to see all of these things happening. So the middle high school is doing it right now. During February, they're doing their Booster Bash event, a little bit different. So it's fun running, they're gonna be doing a dance party. I know the Recorder Concert's coming up. And I would think we have a pasta dinner coming up on this Thursday night. French week coming up, the 13th through 17th. Athletic Boosters have their family bingo night on the 16th. Look at, if you just look at this calendar of events, there's a lot of things there. There's a lot of dates to fill. And obviously, we have the winter break coming up through the 20th through the 24th. And then same thing with March. You know, March is a long month, but it's just action-packed. We have parent conferences coming up, though. Always a reminder to the community that both the middle high school and elementary school will be having parent conferences, which you'll listen here on the events. We have our elementary drama club will be doing aristocrats, as Kat referenced earlier this evening. So that's coming up on March 16th and 17th. And then when we get into April, we'll be looking at the High School Musical, which is going to be Cinderella. I believe it's coming up the first weekend. Or is that the 25th? I think that's the 24th, 25th, I think. Yeah, it's March 24th and 25th. So it's not on our, it should, it should be on our list of events, but it's not there yet. So we'll get it on for next time. Cinderella is March 24th and 25th at 7:00. So we have just a lot of good, fun things coming up over the next couple of months, which I know everyone will be looking forward to. Obviously, the community, you know, I think we've been doing a better job. One of our folks this year has been trying to get all this information out to the community on a weekly basis, making people aware of all the events that are happening throughout the school district and looking for increased participation in all those events. We look forward to seeing the community out and all the wonderful things that are happening over the next few months. And then we'll go back, go back to Ron.
Sorry, more money stuff.
Do a memo for us to transfer.
Good. Be quick. So you had '24. This is just your update on '23. Couple of quick highlights for you. So I try to give you, you know, highlights at the state and federal level for finance. Not a lot going on right now in terms of finance that's relevant to schooling in Washington, but a couple of items at Beacon Hill. The first is that there's been a supplemental spending bill that's been proposed. And what's interesting is, you know, it's, it's got a number of items. But one of them that's reflective of what we're doing here in Carver is an additional $65 million for their school meals pilot program. As a reminder, Massachusetts continued the federal program of providing free school lunches, free school meals for students here in the Commonwealth. As part of the '23 budget, the state allocated and appropriated $110 million. They are on track to run out in March. And so they have an appropriation proposed, another $65 million to continue the project and the pilot through the end of the year. Just to give you a couple of stats here, so here in Carver, we've had participation in lunch program up pretty dramatically because, again, the state is able to pay for, for meals for students, 10% increase just year-to-year at the elementary in '15 for the middle high school. And Project Bread, you know, estimated is about 56,000 more kiddos eating lunch daily in the Commonwealth over just the past couple of years. So it's been incredibly popular and really successful. And we're hopeful that the fund, you know, the supplemental spending bill goes through for that. The other item at the Beacon Hill level is that, you know, we've got the Finance Secretary and House Ways and Means finally agreed on a figure for '24. They're at $40.41 billion. It's a pretty good sign so far. It's usually a conservative number. As a reminder, we typically get the governor's proposed budget about a week and a half ago. It's usually the third week of January, almost, almost like clockwork. But we have a transition, obviously, this year in the governor's seat. So we're expecting that to the middle or the end of March. Finance Secretary's budget is due March 1, so we'll keep an eye on that. And that ultimately changes and impacts our projected Chapter 70 funding. So more on that to come, but that's a helpful snapshot. And the other page is just your warrants for quarter three. Again, thank you to Stephanie for utilizing the Mass Modernization Act to sign our warrants. You've got your warrant, bless you, warrants and payroll, bless you, down to the penny there for payroll and expenses. And bless you. So you've got two tabs there. The first is just your FY23 at a glance, down to the penny on that. And I'll highlight just a couple of transfers. But again, if you have questions about any of them, feel free to ask. First is in row two, that's your custodial subs. So we've actually had turnover down at the elementary school at our custodian staffing, unfortunately. And so our subs have been called in, necessarily so. And so you see a sub transfer of $5,698.14 to cover for that. The next one I'll highlight for you is row five. That's materials for the wind block. Superintendent Neef's been talking about the wind block and some of the materials that are needed to provide staff with all the different things they use to give our students these sort of club, you know, extracurricular opportunities within the day. Last one I want to share with you is ongoing water work over at the elementary school. That's row seven, transfer of $2,669.12. And that's to continue doing some maintenance on the water system over at the elementary school. We would recommend these transfers to committee, but as always, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Does anyone have any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
A little second. You have a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll just preface capital requests a little bit, if that's okay. So the town has made all departments aware that they're estimating there's going to be about $997,000 available in the capital budget this year, town-wide. Our original capital lay request was $870,255. So we've decided to bring a reprioritized list of capital requests, you know, to be reasonable based upon the funds that are available. And so I don't think it's fair to go in with a capital request that would take up the lion 's share of the available capital budget. So I think all of the departments going back and kind of reprioritizing. And Ron's going to kind of take us through our reprioritized list. And then we'd be looking for a vote from the committee to approve the reprioritized list for Jen to bring to the capital outlay committee.
So you know what?
Go, Ron.
Very good.
I just go the first line. I'm frozen again.
Are we taking the school lessons off?
Yes.
So we're gonna get that?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Your computers can give you a hard time. So here's a little background for you, just a refresher. And you do have the full, the full original plan in your background as well, if you want to take a look at it. But so this fall, as committee approved the capital plan, we typically outline a five-year projection. This year, 24-28. As Superintendent Neef mentioned, it's about $170,000 of requests. And we take a zero-based approach to this, that is, we ask for all the things that we think we need within reason. However, we also recognize that sometimes there's just limited resources and limited funds to do all those things. So right now, Carver's total is $997,000, just shy of about $1 million all-in for capital revenue this year. And there's about $2 million in capital proposals from departments throughout the town. So we've been, you know, in collaboration with our colleagues in the town, having some conversations about ways to amend our plan and find opportunities to prioritize the key projects, postpone some others to reduce our overall requests so that the town can try to hit all of its top priorities for capital in FY24. It doesn't get us all the way to what we want, but it certainly gets a lot of what we're looking to do. So I've broken it down for you by subsection, as we typically do. The first is facilities and equipment. And you can see the amendment just broken down by what we presented on the right. And then some of the crossouts would be, you know, representing what we're postponing. So we have the classroom modernization plan. We just kicked that off with some success. We were proposed to cut that down. And we have two departments going right now, and we're looking to try to find a way to still maintain one department and maybe try to get them things in other ways, through grants and those sorts of things. The second is the parking lot repairs. We were keen to get that started, but again, in terms of priorities, we can wait on parking lots. We want to make sure we focus on things that affect kiddos. We do have a curriculum update for the elementary schools, and that's part of their literacy program rollout. This will be the last phase. And you'll see a theme here in the amended plan, which is, we tried to follow through on anything that was in its final phases and postponed things that maybe are about to start. Which brings us to the Pond Street revitalization. We have been having some conversations with CPC about that as well. So there's still opportunity to explore other alternative funding sources. So we'll hold off on proposing that for capital. Wanted to maintain the concessions, Phase 1. We recognize that's something that the community has been trying to explore for a number of years now. And the funding level, at least in Phase 1, which is schematic design, is relatively low-level. The school kitchen equipment and the lighting are both directly grant-funded. So we put those there just to make you aware of the capital projects that we're doing, but it doesn't cost the taxpayers of Carver a dime for that. And then lastly is the culinary hospitality pathway. Again, we've proposed, as we showed the committee in our last meeting, we've proposed an ARP recommendation for that project instead, which would alleviate $185,000 in capital. The second item is our transportation program. So again, we recognize it's a challenging financial climate. And so we would propose postponing our bus exploration as well as the minivan replacement cycle. Sat down and talked with our, you know, our team about this a little while ago, and that's obviously going to be a challenge for us, but we've got great people on the ground who maintain our vehicles. And we're hopeful that this will be a one-time, one-year situation. We'll get right back on our, our replacement cycle. We still will pursue the infrastructure grant through the EPA. And if we get the grant funding, we may have an opportunity to have the feds purchase us a bus, an electric bus instead. So whenever we had an opportunity, we saw for grants, we tried to say, let's go, you know, pursue the grant or pursue some alternative funding so that we can focus our projects that only have one stream opportunity here in the capital. Technology, we didn't recommend any postponements there. Townwide tech, that $58,000 ultimately just keeps our technology operating. For good or for bad, in 2023, a large majority of education streams through technology in some way. And the same is true with servers. Almost everything we do now works on a server in some capacity. That third line is the district-wide student devices. Again, as a reminder, that's a grant that we won a few years back. This will be the third year. FY24 will be the third year of that grant, $160,000. So not a dime of taxpayer money necessarily on that, but something that we wanted to outline. And then the educational technology at the elementary school is the second half of replacing some hardware there. And the middle high school educational technology is the final leg of the touchscreen technology. So we wanted to make sure we finished work that had already been started in technology in that regard.
Ron, I just want to ask for a clarification. So about our facilities and equipment, we reduced the middle high school classroom modernization plan by half. I thought that was the touchscreen. So if that's not the touchscreens, what is that?
So what we do is we select different departments each year to keep the infrastructure in place, that is, the bones of the building in place. But use this modernization funding to infuse additional equipment, hardware, furniture. The goal is to try to extend the useful life of the building without actually doing major expensive multimillion-dollar renovations to the building. So right now, I'm working with Bob Yule and the English Department from last year on their capital project. And they're doing a combination of new classroom furniture in the English Department as well as some equipment as well. This particular year for '24, we had slated two different groups. One was special education and one was like guidance office areas. The guidance office areas predominantly, we're looking to do a refresh of the space visually, carpet, furniture, those sorts of things. We're trying to pursue doing that through some other funding sources. And we'll keep the '25 three, which is about half there, for special education to do their investment. And again, equipment, furniture, not touching the walls of the building itself.
Are you going to the library in any of these?
It's not slated.
Just curious.
If we had more funding, that'd open up the conversation. That'd be a bigger, my opinion would be, that'd be a pretty expensive project.
Yeah. Just the chairs. Just the chairs. I would love student feedback about that.
And then your last is just a roll-up for you, which gives you a quick summary of where we are. Again, you had about $870,000 proposals, reprioritizing, postponing some. You're down to 343. Surely not the ideal, but as we mentioned at the outset, we're talking about FY24. Ultimately recognize that all of the resources in our town, this is a collective effort. And that it's not just about the school's budget or, you know, any one department's budget. It's about making sure that we provide services across the town of Carver. So if this will help the collective effort, then this would be our proposal. Any questions I can help answer for you on capital, on the amendment, amended capital, excuse me?
I mean, I think it makes sense to have our decisions for capital be focused on what's going to benefit our students and our staff most, you know, like definitely ensuring our teachers have up-to-date laptops, completing, you know, the changeover to the touchscreens. Like those things are really important that really benefit what happens in the classroom. So as much as we all hate that parking lot, I think it's a wise decision. So I'll make sure that I represent this well at capital, like there, there's a huge deficit. And so I'm sure that they will appreciate our concessions.
And we'll try, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, anything that we have crossed off here, we'll continue to explore alternative funding opportunities. I can't guarantee they exist, but we certainly will make efforts to try to fund them in different ways.
Do we know when they're going to be voting on ARP funds yet?
I believe the 28th is the next, is the ARP meeting for that. Don't quote me on that, but I'm like 90% sure.
It's Tuesday the 28th. I don't know if I know the time yet. I don't know if it's 5:30 or 6:00.
And are we looking into potential CPC funds for any of the concession or no?
No, not at this time. The only item from capital that was presented to CPC was that Pond Street field revitalization. Hadn't heard back yet from CPC, but it doesn't mean it's not part of their, continue to be part of their process. So it's our hope that that may be something that's still under consideration, which is one of the reasons that would make it an item to postpone, at least on the capital end of things.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a motion to bring that forward?
Yeah, I would recommend that we make a motion to approve the revised capital requests presented this evening.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the revised capital outlay request as presented.
All second. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you for that detailed presentation. Again, Ron.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciated. Okay. That brings us to the first reading of policy sections E and F. Were you able to get them?
No. So what, what I did realize this evening, so we actually had a policy subcommittee meeting prior to this meeting. And at that meeting, we realized that we went through E and F as a policy subcommittee, but we didn't actually get a copy of the revised versions of it to put into the background for the committee as a whole to review. I mean, I can give an overview. So in my mind, we can either table this item and bring it back next time and have E and F actually in the background so you can take a look at it, which I think makes sense. Or we could, I could also just do a general review, but of what the... Or we could, I could also just do a general review of what the policy subcommittee decided. But in my mind, I think it would make sense to table this item, and at the next meeting, we'd bring the first reading for four sections, E, F, G, and H. So I think that's the thing that makes sense since the full committee didn't get the updated versions of E and F in their background.
You have a then?
Your choice, certainly. If the committee wants us to review, if the committee just wants to hear the opinions of the policies subcommittee, they can certainly do that as well.
I don't feel like we made any significant changes to E and F. There were a few things that were struck that weren't really necessary.
So I'll follow the will of the committee, and I think maybe we need to defer to the members who don't have it, didn't get the revised copies in their background.
Do you want to be able to review it before we discuss it? Or are you comfortable with, we can highlight the changes, and then you'll have the full version prior?
Probably by the end of the week.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe possibly tomorrow, but definitely by the next meeting and probably by the end of the week.
So what does everyone, what are your thoughts? Any thoughts?
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, really just the technicality of actually reviewing and reading it.
Okay, all right. So go right ahead, Scott.
Okay. So in terms of policies, E and F, there's actually two policies here that need a little work, but I'll talk about those a little bit. The first one is policy EBBA, which is Automated External Diffusor Policy, AED policy. And as we began to review this policy, I was working with Karen Shaw, the lead nurse for the school district, and we realized that the policy actually calls for overview from a medical expert that is either a cardiac physician or a hospital or an emergency room doctor. And we actually had that oversight in the past through the previous Jordan Hospital. When Jordan switched to BID Plymouth and was bought out, they actually notified all local communities they weren't going to oversee these policies anymore, including for the town of Carver. And so this actually goes back like five or six years, and Karen Shaw said she was actually working with Tom Walsh to see who our new oversight would be for this AED policy. And then it's just something that got dropped that never happened. So for us to move forward on this policy, we have to reestablish the medical oversight with a cardiac doctor or ER doctor. So Ms. Shaw and I are trying to do that, trying to make some connections and see if we can get, then ultimately, what the legislation says is that the doctor needs to review their policy and approve it and be like the person to reference. Now, we've reached out to, I'll just say, I'll leave it at this, we're in the process of trying to find medical oversight for our AED policy. We've made some revisions. We have some proposed draft revisions for that policy, and then we'll bring that forward to the medical doctor, we'll have the medical doctor review it, sign off on it, and then we'll bring it back to the committee. Honestly, this policy is probably going to be held out for a while. It may not come back for, hopefully, we'll have that done prior to the end of our whole policy revision process, but our goal is to hopefully have that done the next month or two. So when we go to approve E and F, we'll probably have to make some sort of stipulation that does not include a review of policy EBBA on the AEDs. The other policy that wasn't going to be included in tonight's presentation is we haven't updated the security cameras in schools policy. We've actually asked for legal counsel on this, and legal counsel just told us they need a little bit more time to complete their review and make revisions for us. I would think that as we move forward with this, we'll be able to actually bring that policy forward with the entire, the rest of E and F. So I think we'll have that policy in place as we move towards a second reading on these. Then really, the thing that we did, the thing that we did the most in these sections were actually eliminate or remove policies that were really no longer needed based on our review of mask policies. Some items of some of these policies were actually covered in other policies as we made reviews or revisions, and some of them were just recommended to be removed. So the policies we're recommending to remove are an emergency policy, A B C A, Emergency Care Plans, policy E B C C, Bomb Threat. And the reason why we're removing the bomb threat is it's not really a policy, it's a procedure for how the school district responds to a bomb threat, which is a document that's covered in our emergency response plans that we have. Policy E A E C dash R, Student Conduct on Buses. The main parts of that policy are covered in other places, so we're making a proposal to remove that. And then under section F, we had two policies we're looking to remove, a Facilities Development Goal and Facilities Planning. So we'll bring all this back. I'll get it to the school committee members once we have the updated version from our mass representative, and then we will, I'll get it up to the committee members and we'll make it forward, we'll bring it forward for our next meeting for a second reading of all these policies, except probably the AED policy. That's my summary of policies, sections E and F. No, there's no, obviously, there's no action needed this evening.
All right. Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add, Jen?
Yeah, I'll just say, for the ones that we're removing, they're either not applicable because a lot of these policies were written back in 2000, so being 23 years old, it's just, there were things that just didn't apply, or, and there was a lot of redundancy in section E, you know, like we, there was an emergency plans section, and then there was an emergency care plan, and it was like, it was reiterating the same thing. So our goal was to streamline, not have things be repetitive, because then if something gets updated and changed, you get missed, and then the less thing you want is our policy to be contradicting each other. So we're just trying to keep it simple, and we're trying to, where we can, remove procedure out of policy, because the policy is supposed to set the procedure but not necessarily outline the procedure. So these two sections were fun in that there was just a lot of cleanup, but no real major changes to them.
Correct. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think the policies we'll see the biggest changes in are the two that are outstanding, which is the AED policy and the security cameras in schools. I think the rest of it's going to be pretty, is pretty straightforward.
Yep. I'm thankful that we're going through this process in the way that we are, so almost see the finish line. Ventilating. And I just want to quickly thank Jen and Scott for all of their time, because we have been spending hours outside of our normal school committee meetings to review all this information, and Ron for chiming in where applicable, and we were trying to channel our, and Ron was keeping things simple and succinct, like Jen had mentioned, so thank you for that insight. Such excitement. Okay, that brings us to something fun. We have Student Council to Hyannis for the Massachusetts Association of School Councils Conference, which is down in Hyannis.
And that's an overnight field trip, so that's why it needs to be approved by the school committee.
Very, three days, two nights.
Yes.
I remember our student council rep talking about it last year, and it was like, he was excited because it was the first one that was in person, but like, it was only a half day.
Yeah, so this is, they're going back to the old three-day conference.
Okay, which is great. We need to vote these individually, correct? Or can we?
Well, you can take them as a group.
We can package them?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And then the senior class trip to Florida for next year. Starting planning for that trip.
Grad bash 2024.
I would gladly make a motion to approve both field trips as presented.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very exciting. I'm glad our students are getting out there and having these great experiences. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. I wanted to give some information about a policy that we actually already have in place, which is policy BJ, which is School Committee Legislative Program, which is something that I don't ever recall discussing, but it's something that I think is important and worthwhile for us to discuss. So it basically talks about, in some other districts, it's called, refers to, sorry, a legislative liaison. So a member from the school committee that would liaise with our representation, so our state rep, our senator, and keep in touch with what's happening on Beacon Hill, much like Ron gave us a brief update as to things that are happening on Capitol Hill. So this would encompass that, and also in conjunction with that, be a representative to report back from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So this is something that I've learned more about on my trip to DC, attending the NSBA Equity Symposium and Advocacy Institute that I went to. So this is something that we spoke a lot of there, and it was something that I wanted us to discuss, because I think there's a real value there. One continuous theme that I heard while on Capitol Hill and then while in the Cape Cod Collaborative Legislative Breakfast that's held in conjunction with Division 7 of MASE was that our legislators really need to hear from us more. The messaging was very strong. We need to hear from you more. We need to know how the funds that we're voting for, how the policies that we're voting to, the bills they're presenting, how they're impacting our districts, and they want to hear our stories. So it was great that they want that feedback from us. Some of it was dire. It was very imperative, especially given, you know, some of the things that are happening on Capitol Hill right now, they really want to be able to have those students' stories and district's stories to share, to hopefully move things forward, like, you know, hopefully getting, working towards getting fully, full funded, fully, oh my gosh, I've had, I thought, I don't know what's wrong with my tongue all of a sudden, working towards fully funding IDA, which is not going to happen overnight. I think the numbers they're throwing around are between 12 and 14%, but there is a lot of push to bring that up over a number of years, hopefully to 40%. And then there also is a push at the federal level for universal females being under the umbrella of the federal government, which would be great because it would free up, what, 165 million just in the Massachusetts budget alone for funding those universal females. And then something else that we also talked about was the Perkins Act, which doesn't apply to Carver, because we're not a Chapter 74 district. But the feedback we received was pretty clear. I was able to share some information with Senator Archon Kloss and a few other offices about our pathways programs and to show them how we're bringing those opportunities for students, they can be career-ready in case they choose not to go to college. So this is something that, again, I think is beneficial to us, and I think it would be great if we, as a committee, were to decide to have this on our radar, I guess, and report on it on a regular basis. So I just wanted to get everyone's input and feedback to see what you thought about doing that.
Do you have been interested in being that person?
I was just appointed to the MASE Legislative Committee, so I am going to be working with the executive leadership team of the MASE Board of Directors to help push their initiatives forward. So it's something that I will be learning a lot more about from those who've been doing this for a long time. So I thought it would make sense. I'm more than happy to do that, and I think it's great. It would be great for us, it would be great for our students to hear. Like I had mentioned to Scott, I'm like, do we have note cards? Do we have postcards? Do we have something that we can, you know, have our teachers, our staff, our students, you know, send a quick note card to share the wonderful stories, much like our brochure? So it is something that I would be interested in doing, so.
Really? Alphabets?
I know. Is there anyone else? I mean...
Because we all know that Stephanie's passionate.
I know, sorry. Some districts actually have a subcommittee, so it all depends on whatever the will of the committee is. We could certainly have a subcommittee. Clearly, I'm looking forward to, I think I sent everyone, May 4th, like save the date for Day on the Hill, because we're actually going to be in person, and Representative Susan Williams-Kitford is going to be there that day, so she's looking forward to meeting with us, so very excited to be able to get back in there and hopefully bring a contingent of students with us for the day to go experience that. It's great, so I'm super excited about it. So whatever everyone thinks, if we want to form a subcommittee and have more than one person work on it, I'm perfectly fine with doing that. I just think it's important that, it's another way for us to, I guess, have our student voices, our teachers' voices, and our voices be heard to advocate for our districts. So that's my spiel.
Maybe we could all think about it and put it as an agenda item for a vote at the next meeting?
Yep, absolutely.
We can absolutely do that. So clearly, I had a great time in Washington, met a lot of people. I was actually able to share some of our policies that we have in place that other districts didn't, so that was kind of exciting to say that we actually had some practices that other districts or from people across the country didn't have in place. That was really great. There were some ideas that I brought back, that some I've shared with Scott. A few things I'll share with the committee, because there are a couple of presentations I want to try to schedule for us to have. I met some amazing students, amazing people, doing such great work, so it was great to go. So anyway, so I guess since I started talking, I'll finish talking, and then move on to other people who want to close out what they're up to from the school committee. I want to wish the elementary school students, they have 100-day celebrations coming up. First through 5th grade is tomorrow, and then kindergarten is February 13th, so congrats on the 100-day of school. I wonder why middle school and high school don't do that? Someone asked me that the other day, and I thought that would be kind of interesting to see what middle schools and high schools would bring in a Ziploc baggie to school for the 100-day.
I don't know. What would you bring to school for a Ziploc bag? Hey, you don't have to answer that question.
In kindergarten, first grade, she actually made like a T-shirt, but then the years older, you just don't really even hear about it.
Yeah, I was like...
A lot of other districts have their kids like in elementary dressed up as like 100-year-old people, which is always really fun.
Right, anyway, I don't know, I thought, but that's, I'm a little geeky when it comes to that kind of stuff, but you want to celebrate that you've made it through 100 days of school and there's only 80 left? I mean, to me, like...
Trust me.
I think their eye is just on the 100-day for sure.
Right? I mean, you made it, you're on the decline now, only 80, you know, anyway, so, my two cents. I hope members of the community will attend the ARP presentation, the capital outlay presentations. I encourage people to get ready to attend town meeting, and please show up, because your voice matters, and you help shape our district, our community, and how your tax dollars are spent. So I encourage people to pay attention to the calendars. I'm very appreciative for our amazing calendars and for all the pushes that are being sent out on social media to spread the word of the great things that are happening in our district every day. So I hope people will take advantage of those notifications and join us and come see what our students are up to. They're doing so many wonderful, great things. And super quickly, I want to say, congrats to all of the senior nights. There have been so many, so many seniors celebrating their last seasons and their last games, and it's been bittersweet to see and to watch. And a quick shout-out to track. Had a great track meet yesterday, so kudos to everyone and kudos to those who are still playing. And again, please come fill those seats at those games, because the kids love seeing faces in the crowds. So with that, see you next time.
Who's next? Okay. So we already kind of touched on it, but with capital, there was a huge deficit. So we have our next meeting, we have a joint meeting Monday with the Finance Committee, and I believe some departments are going to be coming and presenting to us. We did have an all-day meeting a couple weeks ago on a Saturday. We're at the fire station. It was joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee in Capital Outlay, and all of the town's departments came and presented their budgets in full, and then if they had capital requests, presented their capital requests, and some of them did some prioritizing in that meeting. And so for me personally, as an accountant, it was really interesting, like there were some departments in town that I didn't even know how to budget, you know, and to hear like how they're spending their money, and, you know, and who gets what and who uses what, you know, it was really... and, you know, and who gets what and who uses what, you know, it was really, I, I'm a complete, you know, math nerd, and I actually really enjoyed that meeting where other people would not find that to be six hours of fun, but I did. And so I learned a lot. And so, yeah, it's been an interesting experience being on Capitol Outlay and learning about all the other departments in town outside of the school and what their needs are. But I will say that all the, all of the departments are really collaborative. Like, they present their needs, but then they're very quick to say, you know, but we know other needs are important too. Like, we, we really do have a really good sense of community in that way. So I will continue to represent the school and our needs and our new revised requests. On a personal note, I want to share that, well, first of all, nomination papers are available at Town Hall for anyone that wants to run for any open seats in the community. Both Stephanie and I are up for reelection, and I have had to make a hard personal decision to not run for reelection due to some personal matters. I just need to be more valuable to my family, and so I need to sadly not run. It was an extremely hard decision for me to make, because I really enjoy being on this committee, and I really enjoy doing what I can to support the students of Carver and the community of Carver as a whole. So I really hope that somebody who has passion for the education of our students and wanting to continue to see great things happen every day in our buildings, will pull papers and run to fill my seat. Because my, my tenure, a lot of it was overshadowed by COVID and leading the schools through the pandemic and how to safely have students be educated. And it's unfortunate, because we're finally getting back to, you know, being post-pandemic and how to improve what's happening in the classrooms every day. And I'm, I'm honestly and genuinely really sad that I cannot run at this point. But family has to come first. So with that said, for whoever watches this on the playback, I hope that people will pull papers and will run, because our town needs leadership and vision and people with passion. So have a happy February vacation, everybody. I'm still in this seat until April, and I promise to serve with my whole self until then. So, thank you.
Jim, thank you for your service to the community as a member of the school committee. You really have been here through some of the more trying times that the school committee and the school district had to go through. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks.
I just would like to say thank you, Jen, for your service.
Thanks. Not today.
Well, you know, for what you've done so far.
I appreciate it.
I met with the Student Advisory Committee last night, and it was a really interesting, I really enjoy that part of my responsibilities with the school committee. Kind of like just hanging out with some of the high school kids and getting to know them, and getting to know what they're struggling with, whether it's homework, or it's being overly, overworked between school and work and sports. I also had the privilege of attending the Biotech Pathways presentation about the time change and daylight savings time, which is something I am weirdly obsessed with. And so when I received the email from the teacher, I was like, yes, I will be there. And they blew me away with the fact that they went to Bridgewater State and they did like genetics tests on themselves to figure out if they were morning people or evening people. And I didn't even know that was a trait. I mean, I know you could have that. I didn't know it was genetic. But the effort and the passion that they put into that project, I walked out with like more thought and more questions. So they really made me think about, about it, even though I thought I had very strong opinions on the matter, oddly. Also, I want to thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight, because the wonderful thing is having an open forum and being able to have your voice heard. And it's not always easy. I think it is a great lesson for students to get, be a part of government, and, and it was a great learning opportunity, if nothing else. So thank you for taking your time to come out. And lastly, the elementary school course, that was just a highlight of my day, and it's been a very long day. So that was just a wonderful performance that they put on for us, and thoroughly enjoyed it and cannot wait to see all the things that are coming, like Cinderella and the rest of those things. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate both Stephanie and Jen's sentiments about town meeting and getting involved in our town government. It's very important, especially with town meeting, for you to attend and have your voices heard. There are a lot of big things coming up on this year's agenda, and I just want to strongly encourage everybody to attend both nights if they can, if it ends up being more. Hopefully not, but if it does, attending all the nights, so that we can get some pretty important things moved through our system. And thank you to Charlie, who came and spoke to us tonight about his wonderful projects. I think that was amazing. I'm very proud to have a student like that in our midst. And yes, again, the elementary school course, and Mrs. Cramp, too. I mean, that presentation was fantastic. I wasn't expecting to tear up tonight, but I did. And I'm very much looking forward to the Recorder Concert on Thursday night. Over to you, Colleen.
I appreciate all the acknowledgements, presentations, performances this eve, this evening, and all the people that came out and spoke in support of something they, you know, truly believe in. And I appreciate that we have public comment for them to have some space to go to, to express how they're feeling. And I would like to wish Jen the best of luck. I know you're still here, but I really appreciate your point of view, and I've learned a lot from you. And I know you do great things, and you've actually done great things. So we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Shocking. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Tom.
Good night.